Okay, welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Martez here.
Trustee Weekly.
Present, ready for duty.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here.
And so 4.2, report out on closed session from November 20th, 2024. No action was taken. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno el signo de número para la contraseña. Si asiste a la reunión en persona y necesita interpretación al español, solicite un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance, and you can bring it to Evelyn up front. Public comments are limited to three minutes. As a reminder, the board cannot have a discussion on public comments. However, we may direct the superintendent to follow up. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called on, sorry, it's cold, at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. Do we have any changes to the agenda? None? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is 12.1. Just checking. We do have a little comment, but it's for another item. So it's just those, right? Okay. So we have no oral communication. That brings us to 9.1. We'll open the public hearing regarding the design build agreement for the district-wide lighting retrofit project. And this one, we do have a card for. So do we have? Do we just take that first? Let me see, make sure he's Carl Landers. Yeah. Okay. So he's on Zoom. So Carl, you have three minutes?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Was that a yes?
Yep.
Okay, great. Good evening, members of the board. Sorry I couldn't be in person. I want to urge you to reconsider approving the $17 million lighting retrofit as a no bid contract under government code 4217. The proposed 49-year payback period clearly fails to align with the intent of the law, which requires cost savings to be demonstrated within the useful life of the project. And LED lighting systems are estimated to last 20 years. The district will save about $7 million per the report, and that clearly does not offset the $17 million cost. This invalidates the sole source justification. So what's the alternative then, as the lighting retrofit does need to happen? And I would request that you ask staff to competitively bid the implementation of the project. While some vetting of Southland, the contractor, may have happened by staff or Van Pelt, none of that process is presented or visible in the board materials or your discussion last meeting. You're being asked to spend 20% of the first tranche of Measure S funds on this project without competitive bidding. I feel we should bring more transparency to the selection process. In addition, by opening the installation of this work to competitive bidding, the district may find qualified local contractors who could complete the work at a lower cost. Even if the cost ends up being the same as Southland's $17 million bid, there's substantial community benefit to selecting a local electrical contractor that could inject that $17 million back into Redwood City's economy, supporting small businesses, creating local jobs. Many of those could be district parents, and I'm sure that the taxpayers funding this initiative would value that outcome. So I believe competitive bidding would promote transparency. It would give local contractors a fair chance to participate. It would potentially lower project costs while delivering equal or better results. And while energy conservation projects are important and they feel good to approve, this one's being rushed through before the district's facilities master plan is complete. Moving forward now, risk spending money on lighting in buildings that could later be renovated, wasting taxpayer money and resources. So I urge you to not approve it. Wait to align the lighting upgrades with other facilities improvements that will be prioritized by you later this year under the new facilities master plan. Ask staff to encourage local contractors to bid for the work. Doing so will ensure fiscal responsibility. It'll increase transparency and potentially provide community investment while aligning with your broader facilities master plan. So I'm just asking that we take the time to get this right, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We can address some of that on item 11.1. So that brings us to our bond consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that brings us to 11.1, adoption of resolution number nine and approval of energy service agreement between our CSD and Southland Industries.
Good evening, Evelyn. Could you promote Nick Olson and Dez House to panelists, please? Dez? Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, we are presenting resolution number nine for the adoption of the energy services agreement with Southland Industries. Joining us tonight is Jen Gibb from VPCS, who will go through the presentation slide again, and with the team here, be happy to answer any questions about the resolution or the contract with Southland. So that I'll hand it over to Jen. Let me share my screen.
Thank you so much for having me again this evening. Happy to be here. I'm Jennifer Gibb. I'm one of your program managers here, supporting the bond program, and I wanted to talk about the opportunity before you with resolution nine. This is regarding the lighting project under a 4217. So some of the things that we wanted to highlight is with the implementation of this project, there will be 52% energy reduction, which will equate to a savings of $312,000 annually. It's improved lighting. What we're getting in the lighting is we're getting an installation of retrofit replacement redesign of all your lighting from the fluorescents to the LED. You are getting within that pricing, you're also getting all the Title 24 code compliance, so structural, electrical, any coordination with the division estate architecture, whether it's exemption or not, that is included in that pricing. The team has gone line by line through every single classroom, every light interior, exterior, in your ancillary facilities and district facilities. We've excluded any opportunity for facilities that we know will either be intentionally remodeled and/or demolished completely by the, to the best of our knowledge. So you're getting also the, one of the things that's important is AB 2208 compliance, which is requiring us to no longer be able to purchase fluorescent bulbs. And so the price and cost to go and secure for our existing spaces right now, it's not available. So we're going to secondary markets. It's going to be incredibly difficult for your staff to access those bulbs, and they're no longer sold here in California. Some of the efficiencies that we have with utilizing 4217 and working with Southland on this project is faster procurement. We save the cost of the assessment. We save escalation and escalation savings. The price that we have right now is secured as of three months ago. So we've, Southland's been advocating to keep this pricing, and bidding and out will take, you know, time to do that, and we'll see another six months, basically on this price, six months' worth of escalation. We avoid multiple markups. So putting this out to bid on a hard bid would require us to hire a consultant, to hire a design team to design the systems. We'd have to formally bid it. If one team could do it, great. If one team couldn't, we'd have multiple opportunities for contractors. Just the consistency and uniform of system and safety with the system and lighting is really important. There's value in efficiency in the process of having one team manage it. What's really great is, yes, Southland is not located here at their corporate office, but they do have an office in Union City, and they do, they are a union shop. They do utilize union labor. So all of that is something that we've taken thoughtful action in the partnership with them if you so choose to move forward tonight. And then again, the warranty of standardization, that you have uniform standardization district-wide, and that will be ease for your staff and team to have that. We also have lighting control systems included in that cost as well. So that is a high-level overview of some of the items behind this request and resolution this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions for the board.
Would you like to start with questions or comments? I know we had a long discussion on this last meeting, but there may be more.
Yeah, I think we had a pretty, pretty long discussion last meeting about this. You know, I think some of the things we talked about was definitely vendor selection and why we picked this one and the no bid. Actually, it's new information about, I thought the, our speaker made a good point about prioritizing local, you know, people in the Bay Area. And so that was good to hear and learn about. You know, Southland has their fabrication, I think you said a fabrication plant up in Union City that services all of Northern California, and then is of course using union labor, which would include local employees. So that kind of benefit is there. That I think we'd asked about, why now? You touched on it a bit with, I forgot the AB number, but the regulation that says it's not, the fluorescent's not there. In fact, I think, David, you were the one that was probing about why now? What makes it so urgent? And I think the discussion kind of leaned around that, you know, it's kind of more efficient to do it all at once instead of dripping piecemeal like here and there, or you know, and kind of put that together. And I think Elisa, you were saying that, you know, it is a requirement. It's the right thing to do. It just seems like, you know, the opportunity is to do now. You did talk about comparable estimates, and I don't know if you got a chance to look for comparable estimates and sort of had any of those to share, share with us. I think you did talk about the research that you've done of saying like, yeah, it is competitive in that range. And then we did ask about the coordination, which you touched on, as the facility master plan comes together. And Rick, I think you said that we could do adjustments on the fly, but is that right? Like if it, if it turns out like, hey, the facility master plans come in in one place that we thought we were going to do lighting upgrade for now, it's going to be a total different thing. We can adjust this plan, and obviously the cost will adjust with that accordingly. Right? So I think that, you know, that was kind of the stuff that we discussed last time, and I think you covered a lot of the speaker questions today. So I don't, I don't have any additional questions beyond what we, we talked about last week. But I did want to just sort of, not last week, a couple of weeks ago, but I just want to sort of recap what we had covered there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I also, I expressed many of my concerns at the last meeting, so I just want to make sure that Carl is aware that, you know, I had some concerns about the cost of this project, both in terms of the time horizon for ROI, as well as the expense, as well as the, the timing. I get the argument that by doing a universal replacement, we'll net save some money, but then we also end up spending money because there's the time value of money, and we're replacing fixtures that should continue to work just fine for the next 10 to 20 years. And it's likely that the quality and the cost of LED lighting is going to continue to improve over time as well. So I'm, I'm left a little bit torn about spending a large chunk of Measure S on an upgrade that doesn't go directly to improving the quality of instruction that's happening in the classroom. It's more about regulatory approval and the difficulty that that regulation is going to create with acquiring replacement fluorescent bulbs.
Rick, or somebody, can you speak to what David, like the last little bit that David talked about? Not, how did you say it? Like not impacting academics and?
Yeah.
Because I know what, what I, what I thought I heard is that we are going to have trouble actually replacing the, the light bulbs as they go out, these fluorescent lights. And I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you have to have light to be able to do academics. So for me, it seems like there's a pretty direct connection. But I do appreciate what you're saying about, you know, you know, I, I'm interested, like, because basically you either do it piecemeal, or you do it altogether. And I think what we talked about last time is ultimately, at the end of the day, it's actually better to do it altogether. It actually would save the district money. But I think what you're saying is
There's time value in that, right? So if you shift the expenditure left, you've spent that money now.
No, I understand that.
I'm happy to, and then also bring in Dez Haas with Southland to speak to not just the compliance issue, but also the quality that lighting actually gives for student achievement. So there are studies through, at a facilities level, we belong to Coalition for Adequate School Housing, super active in that. And there's been studies by the state, Oregon State University about how the direct impact of our facilities, lighting, HVAC, the temperature, we talked about that at the last meeting and throughout some of the items that we've talked about in the past, how that has a direct correlation on the learning environment and the student achievement in, in our classrooms and in our schools and as well as staff. So
It absolutely does, but we've been presented with no data that there is a deficiency in lighting today that is impeding our students' academic achievement.
Correct.
And just to add with, with what Jennifer is adding, the improved learning environment, the technology that's in the district right now is essentially becoming obsolete in the state of California, as evident by the AB 2208. The, having a uniform standard, the studies that show if there are lights that are replaced kind of by piecemeal, it's going to change in the flicker and just the difference in light temperatures or ballast fixtures from LED to fluorescent. It's been proven to cause headaches or eye fatigue in students. And also just the cost avoidance with the deferred maintenance between being able to source these, these items as they come available or as they need to be replaced. So, and that's on the improved learning facility and the learning environment with the kids so that every classroom is the same, so they don't go into classroom A, and it has a certain type of lighting in it, and then classroom B is a little bit different, because that also creates more fatigue on the, on the eyes, which obviously we need for reading, writing, and pretty much everything we do in schools. As we spoke about it last, last meeting, and thank you for having me back, we, we definitely want to do this all in one with the district so that, you know, every school, there's one warranty that you're going after. There's one, one uniform team that the district can, can work with. We are local with our Union City shop. We pull from the local labor halls. We take an immense amount of pride in giving back to the communities that we're working with and utilizing labor from the communities that we're there with. So all in all, what we spoke about last time with the compliance, but, and also I, I understand that the, the amount is 212,000 annually, but there's also a 52% reduction in actual usage. And that will in turn create more savings as utility rates escalate.
Anything else?
So I think, and I forget who just spoke on Dez. I didn't really take notes as Carl was speaking, but he mentioned that even though we say we're going to save, we're really not saving. So maybe if somebody can just address that piece, because obviously it is written that we will save an estimate of 212,000 or 10% reduction. So maybe just so that the public can be more clear.
Yeah, so by replacing, this is Dez House with Southland, by replacing the fluorescent or the older lighting to the LED, the 52% reduction in energy use while putting out a better, better lit environment and being more energy efficient, that's what's going to cause the savings. The, the 52% energy use reduction is really where you're going to make the most money as utility rates continue to escalate. We like to, we like to say that we'll know that the, the utilities companies will have our best interest at heart and follow a specific schedule, but that seems to change every now and then. So by implementing this project now, when costs are what they are, the deferred usage that you're going to be saving is, is really the crux of why this project is so important to move forward now.
And I did want to note that we have reviewed the contract and the process with our district legal counsel, and it has met the requirements of utilizing 4217.
I was just going to ask Rick and Dr. Baker, given everything that you know about the project and what you've heard tonight, and what we talked about at the last meeting and all of that, is this something that you still recommend that the board approves tonight?
I do still recommend it. And the reason why we brought it back for approval tonight, to make sure we were doing it correctly. I do believe we will see the savings as noted. We will be increasing good light in our classrooms and throughout the district, much to the point that trustee my mind just on bike. Quickly, that guy down there, I apologize for that. Made about can we change light temperatures? Can we do something different in the classroom? Can we make it more advantageous to students? Those are all things that we don't have the ability to do now, but will be able to do with this. Jen mentioned it, as well as Dez, procurement of bulbs going out and then being able to replace those in a timely manner or not on the secondary or, or even a third market trying to deliver this. It might be easier today, but it won't be in a year, right? So looking at the totality of the project and the need that it will fix for the district while producing something different in the classrooms in terms of lighting in that type of infrastructure, I still think it's advantageous to the district to move forward with this project.
Yeah, I just wish we could give it to the facilities master plan group to stack rank, because we only have so many chits in the Measure S fund, and I want to be confident that we're using that taxpayer money and to give the highest possible bang for the buck. And I don't currently have confidence that if we did that exercise, that this would come out on the top.
I think something Elisa pointed out last time is important, too, is that we are fortunate to have the bond fund for this, whereas districts that are just starting to deal with this now are having to access their general fund money for it. And although it may not be a top priority, whereas like putting in HVAC or, you know, some other fun sexy projects, I get lighting isn't that, but it's important, and we're going to have to because of the AB, whatever it was, that the fluorescent light bulbs, yeah. I think it's an important project that we need to move forward with.
The other thing is, I think, you know, I think what people are trying to dial in on the cost is that it's just like the light bulbs or something. That's, that's actually a small part of the cost. It's actually bringing all of the lighting up to code. I mean, we know we have some places where it's not up to code right now, so it's up to code. It's going to be safer, you know, from a, yeah, just safer. I don't need to go into details there. And then also there's going to be some additional enhancements, like the whole dimmer in every classroom. I think that's extraordinary. And again, it's on the margins of perhaps something else, like building TK bathrooms as an example. We know we need to do that as well. But I'm concerned that if we don't do this, that we are going to start then having to tap into the general fund in a very haphazard way. And next thing you know, we're going to be doing, I guess, smaller contracts, you know, at this side or with this classroom or what have you, and I think it's going to get very expensive more quickly than we might think. I do agree, 16 million is a lot of money. It absolutely is. But I just think for all the reasons that we've talked about, it makes sense to do now. I mean, I guess the only thing would be if there's a reason to wait six months, like you said, and have the rest of the priorities to do it. But I think the concern that we talked about a little bit is that all the districts are moving in this direction. So if we want to have the workers, contractors actually resource the materials, that we're going to be ahead of the game on some of the other school districts if we wait. You know, we, we're going to be in a pipeline situation. I don't know. I think that's some of what you talked about, or maybe what it's, I know I asked some questions, maybe it's some of what I saw in responses to emails, but yeah, anyway, I think my cue.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I was going to, I am going to support this project going forward. I appreciate the comments about like shifting left to the, the cost of time value of it, but there's also the, you know, the, the impact of decreasing the energy use footprint that is also shifted left by, you know, by advancing this project now. I do think we were looking for some projects that we were able to start now without having to wait for the facilities master plan, and energy efficiency is one of the ones that, similar to doing solar with our Measure T money, and obviously HVAC, which is not energy efficiency, but is something that's clearly a priority. You know, but, but I think energy efficiency is one of the priorities for the bond itself, and so I think that that fits in there well. It would be nice if everything could line up, and it was kind of like, yes, we had the facilities master plan to put in there, but I think there's going to be some district-wide initiatives that, you know, we're going to look at, hey, we need to do this in all the sites across the district and put that stuff together. And this, this feels like one of those upgrades, one of those modernizations that I, I feel comfortable with advancing now. And so that, that's why I wanted to say that I'll vote in favor of it.
I did just want to mention one other thing as a quick start project. It has the opportunity with the successful passage of Proposition 2, the state bond. You have the opportunity to, with Southland, either getting a DSA exemption, Division of State Architecture exemption for permitting, or getting full permitting approval through DSA. We can take that for modernization funding at our site. So we're actually being very proactive in accessing that funding if so available. So we would get in line and put all those applications in line, and because of the dollar value, it's able to get match funding. You know, you have enough volume for it to be an eligible project for submission at the state. So that is another benefit of moving forward, again, streamlining, getting in line and with your labor and putting it out also in line at the funding application process. So just another benefit.
Yeah. So just to clarify that, because I'm glad you brought that up, because we saw this with Measure T, some of the work that we did. Actually, that's how we're now paying for all the, the extra solar at school sites. So just to clarify, the way the contract is written or the agreement with South, Southland, if we approve it, that we would go ahead, we can get in line for some of the Prop 2 money. If that money comes back, then that would go to the district and we could use it for other projects, right?
Correct. It goes back, it's state school facility funds. It goes back into your Fund 35, and it's used for other high priority capital projects district-wide on any district-wide project.
So then that would bring down the overall cost of the school district, yeah.
And just to add to that as well, this is Dez House. With you guys adding HVAC throughout the district, and it's something that's not currently there, you are going to increase your energy usage significantly. So being able to implement this project as a quick start with that reduction just gives you a little bit of a break in addition with the solar that you will be adding. So you really are taking, going to be more proactive on energy efficiency than reactive as you're making the HVAC mods throughout your district.
Just one question on the application process to receive, you know, some matching dollars. Are those applications already out? Are they going to be out within the next few months?
So how the state school facility program works is the proposition approved by voters on November 5th allocated $8.5 billion to K-12. The remaining 1.5 is for community colleges with this $10 billion bond. The district has a measure of eligibility for modernization. It's a point in time. You have it. It's a little bank that sits at the state. And as projects become available, from you doing them at the local level, you can submit. Proposition 51 passed in 2016. It had, it had been exhausted. And so that's the, why Proposition 2 was And so that's the why Proposition Two was brought forth for the November ballot. With that, again, it's not like it's a competitive grant program or you have to have, you know, so much enrollment to get this funding. It is based on the age of your facility. So portables are worth twenty years. Permanent facilities are worth twenty-five. Once you meet that based on the age, anything within that building envelope can be utilized for modernization funding. So we would be working with the district in concert with Southland to put forth those applications to state and get you in line for that. And we'll be doing that as part of Measure S, just like you did in Measure T and other past projects. We will continue to access every penny we can. What's really great about Proposition Two, there's a return of grants coming, which is if I exhausted my twenty or twenty-five year life of my building, I like, let's say the program started in nineteen ninety-eight. Twenty years goes by, right, twenty eighteen. Those buildings are now, the grants for those have come back. So you now have a new more eligibility. And then there's also fifty and seventy-five year grants in this program as well. So again, maximizing, putting the money, spending the money today, getting in line and getting that money for other projects that are beyond what our bond can do today with the funding that we have.
And does Prop Two set up similar to the way Fifty-One was that the sooner you get in your applications, you are getting in line?
There is a
I think they changed a little bit of it, but
Correct. They did change it to prioritize small school districts. So but as Redwood City, you would have the opportunity, if you're in line and a small school district bumps you twice, then the third time you're up. So they also are working on fund releases more quickly than they have in the past, and they were able to kind of set a process with the general fund that we had over the last allocation that we had for school facilities over the last several years. So there have been some modifications, but the pot of money that is for Redwood City and or your eligibility has not changed. It will only grow until you use it.
So what's our mental model for this, that there's some chance that we'll effectively get half off? We'll get a fifty percent reimbursement for the cost of the project or?
It's not a direct fifty percent, but yes, you will get additional for every dollar you spend. Once we put it in for state funding reimbursement, you will get that reimbursed at a percentage of the hundred percent that you spent.
If we had to guess, what percent?
It's a it ranges between thirty and forty percent. Yeah, depending on the cost of project.
Is it basically guaranteed that we're going to get it, but it could take some time?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And so the the main uncertainty is not whether or not we're eligible for it. The main uncertainty is the date.
It's not if, it's when.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. It's not a lottery ticket.
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
Well, and the other thing I'll just say is, you know, some of the school districts, if they are not able to pass a bond, and many of them cannot, then they don't have any funds to even go to the state for matching. And I think they did a lot, they're allowing a little flexibility in that, but we still could get potentially more because we've been able to pass a bond, whereas some of the school districts just can't do it. So thank you, community, once again for voting in Measure S.
So if there's nothing else.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion on this particular item.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And that's going to bring us to twelve point one update on workforce housing project. Thank you, Peter, for being with us tonight.
Am I on? Yes. Hi. My my name's Peter Ingram. I've been a consultant to the district since it it was the month before COVID started. And my assignment's been to help you all go through the process that I'm going to report on tonight to evaluate whether workforce housing makes sense for this district. I'd like to start by introducing a couple of people that are here that may be able to answer questions related to your your work so far. With us, right behind me is Blake Bohm, who's the Managing Director of KKN Public Financing and is one of the firms that helps your district with financial affairs. Also on the line with us tonight is Rob Tercini, who's the Senior Vice President, Sobrato. He is our development partner. They own the property next door and we're in a joint partnership development application together. So if there's questions for the development side of this that I'm not able to answer, Rob is with us. I'd also just like to thank very much outgoing trustees, McAvoy and Janet. You have served on the ad hoc superintendence committee for this effort, the Workforce Housing Committee, and you've helped guide me and your team through the process, and you've been very responsive to information and helping make decisions. You've also done a great job of recognizing when something should bump to the board for their consideration or or action. And I just really appreciate the energy you brought to that. And likewise, I'd just like to thank the whole board and Dr. Baker for the opportunity to work on this project. I happened to be on the Board of Habitat for Humanity seven or eight or ten years ago when the condominium project across the street was built. So I have a special affinity for housing in this community, and I'm just really pleased to be here. So that said, in your memo packet that was posted on your website, there's a fairly in-depth memorandum that provides a lot more detail than I'm going to go through tonight. But I just wanted to say that I'm happy to ask questions as I'm summarizing and going through the presentation. So with that, I would like the next slide, please. So tonight, my job is to help recap the journey that this district's been on to address the significant problems around housing affordability in your community. I'd like to quickly describe the project as as it's currently envisioned and where we stand in the city approval process for development in the downtown. I'd like to highlight some decisions and actions that the board will address in the next six to eight months. And I'll probably spend a little more time on that part of of the information, just to make sure that everybody here and whoever is listening or watching understands that there's going to be some significant decisions ahead of you as you decide whether you're going to proceed or not. And of course, I'm here to answer questions and hear your comments. So the next slide is a reminder that I probably don't need to remind anybody in this room or on the end of a a Zoom line that the challenge we face for everybody in the peninsula and in the Bay Area is the cost of housing. And teachers, especially teachers in the peninsula and the Silicon Valley area, are especially vulnerable to the cost burdens of simply paying the rent. So this chart that's on the slide came out of an article that appeared a couple of years ago that actually did a lot of different data sets around the state about this problem and really highlighted Redwood City as one of the examples. And you can see that for a teacher making almost seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars, if you're trying to rent a market rate studio, you're right at the cusp of how much you should be spending on your on your rent out of your income. And everything above that, you become increasingly burdened. So the the board several years ago established some goals for addressing that and started an exploration process. And you're in the you're in the process of taking action on that, and this is this is part of the journey. I also wanted to highlight that, and this came out of discussions over the last several years as well, and just networking in the education community, that we know there's an increasing number of school districts on the peninsula, in our county and around the state that are pushing ahead to create workforce housing for their employees. And what that does is it helps solve some of this big problem, but it also creates a competition factor for districts that is different than what you've had to face in the past if you're trying to recruit and retain the best employees. So a lot of districts are teaching us who are already ahead of us that that helps them, but they recognize that that gives them an advantage in in the recruitment arena for the talent that we all want. Next slide, please. So this is a very summarized recap of a very long process, but I wanted to highlight a few things that really strike me as fundamental to where you are in this in this discussion. Twenty eleven to twenty sixteen, several things happened at the state and local level that really started to set the stage for what you're considering today. And I kind of like to look at them as enabling actions that brought a very vivid vision and and bold action to create the circumstances for this district to take this property and change it into something with a much higher value. Because before the downtown precise plan was passed, this property was probably serving toward the top of its highest and best use. But with the upzoning that goes with the downtown plan, your property is now worth way more than it ever has been. And it can it can take a lot more density and capacity and do a lot better for you and for your community. So that's really fundamental, just like the State Teachers Act of two thousand sixteen created the legislative framework that is helping districts move ahead where they did not. They they really couldn't before because there were so many barriers at local level. In two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, your board and your trustees began the explorations that led to today. You sort of went from how can we do this? Well, you went from should we do this to how can we do this? And that's kind of where you are now, is you're pushing further down that road of how can this be done? And then in two thousand twenty and twenty-one, the trustees set the goals that we just saw and really took some courageous actions to move down the further down this road. Because there's a lot of risk here. It's it's a crazy expensive project. But the return on that investment over time is what we're really trying to define for you as you move forward closer to to making those decisions. At the same time, the the city council was doing further work on its downtown plan to provide the environmental review umbrella that this project now falls under. So we weren't we weren't burdened with two years and a lot of money to do our own environmental review process. We fell under that big umbrella in the downtown. And that's quite a benefit. I also should point out that about that time, the Sobrato organization introduced the idea of, you know, the city's going to do a gatekeeper. They call it a gatekeeper process for a bundle of projects that wants to move ahead in the downtown precise plan area. Why don't we partner up, combine the properties and create mutual value for each other and create a synergistic process? So then in two thousand twenty-three and moving beyond that up until late last year, so late two thousand twenty-three, I want to just read the summary from from the memo. It's been a little over a year since your board hosted a well-attended study session about this public-private partnership project. The meeting was held at Hoover School Gymnasium and was moderated by Rafael Rafael Avandeno, the Executive Director of Redwood City Together. The development partner Sobrato facilitated a presentation for the project design. And then the main part of the evening was having trustees from Jefferson Union High School District join you and really tell their story about how they created housing that's been open now for, I think, two years. I think this is its second year. And that was very helpful for all of us to hear what's it like to go through all that work, open the doors, and what effect does it have on the workforce in the district? And it was it was quite vivid, and there was a lot of good questions and and discussion that followed. So that was really important. So fast forward to tonight. We're getting close to the end of two thousand twenty-four, and we hope that by the end of the calendar year, we will have reached a milestone that's important in this project with the city development review process, which is your application is deemed complete. That means that the staff is satisfied that we've answered all the detailed technical, legal issues, questions, and have clarified what it is we intend to do so they can move us forward to eventual approval in front of the city council. So from the end of the year to that final hearing with the city council, we are projecting about six months. So if everything works well, we should be in front of the city council in June. And their action is to entitle the project, which means they've granted their discretionary approval for the project to move ahead. Doesn't mean it's going to get built, doesn't mean it gets built the next day. It just means that now you can move to the next steps, which is do your construction drawings, pull your permits, get your financing in place and all those other steps. Next slide, please. So I want to just recap because it has been a while. We first submitted our gatekeeper request to the city back in March of two thousand twenty. And at the time, as you can see from this diagram, and it's actually a little hard to read, the the building that you envisioned for workforce housing was slated to be six stories with sixty-eight units in it. And the office building next door was going to be seven stories. As it's currently designed and in review, it now is ten stories. It has a hundred and eight units and it has eight stories of office. And a lot of that has to do with us leveraging the what's called the state density bonus law, which allows housing projects of certain types to exceed what is allowed by the zoning in an area. And that helps create more efficiency of use of the property. It also expands the number of housing units that you may be able to offer to your employees.
And Peter, real quick, in addition to the housing, also the district office.
Thank you.
Would be tucked under.
Yes. So another change from back to in March of two thousand twenty to now is that you went through a very thorough pros and cons due diligence process to assess should we replace the district office somewhere else away from the property and focus just housing on the property? Or should we keep the district office on the property? And ultimately, you decided on the latter. So the second level of that building will have the district office replacement, and then the housing is on floors above it. The next slide actually has a pretty nice graphic that shows what that could look like. So on the right on Jefferson, the entrance to the housing lobby is on Jefferson facing that way. And the the entrance to your future district office is on Bradford about halfway down the building. And this summarizes the configuration. So in the building of a hundred and eight units, you'll have sixty workforce rental houses, housing units that you will have the ability to send rental rates for. And your goal has been stated to be anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the current market rate in the downtown area. The forty-eight deed restricted units fall under the city's Affordable Housing Plan and ordinance. And that has different income levels for households that would be pre-qualified to live there. You asked us to do an analysis a couple of years ago of the sort of the salary profile of your district employees and how well that might work for them, because the the worry was, gee, what if a teacher desperately needs affordable housing, but they make too much for those city mandated levels? But we found that a lot of your employees would still be qualified, could be qualified to have those units. So you ultimately decided, let's give those units to the city in exchange for keeping the fee that the office developer would have to pay as mitigation for impact on the housing stock.
I think my memory on that, a significant chunk of our classified staff fell into those.
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. Yeah. Yeah. And then the office side has the twenty thousand feet for your district office, which is in your building. The commercial office is around a hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet. And then we're going to share a podium at the ground level and two under underground parking levels. So parking will be provided underneath both buildings and shared between the two entities. Next slide. So one of the many questions you've got and and I get is, so let's say we go ahead and build this, how is the building going to be managed? And how do you, as a district, make sure that? as the educators and as the policymakers for the educational mission of this district, how is there a clean separation between that activity and providing housing to employees? How do we keep those two worlds, excuse me, how do we keep those two worlds as separate as possible? And what we're seeing out in the larger space of California is the districts who've moved ahead with bond measures or other funding mechanisms to build housing have set up a separate nonprofit entity that they appoint the members of the board and they charge them with managing the building, making the decision, setting the rules based on broad policy that gets handed to them by the board of trustees. So we're proposing that we would use that model that's out there. Uh, and in fact, uh, our friends at Jefferson Union High School District have said, we did all that. There's no reason for you to reinvent the wheel. We'll make all that available to you once you get to that stage so that you can take our model, adjust it for your needs and save some time and energy. So this just lists some of the things that that entity will be responsible for. Probably the most important thing is they'll be managing the budget for the building. So as rents are collected, that money stays in a fund that's for the building only. And then they manage the payment of bills, the property manager, all paying the utility bills, whatever it is. They also will deal with the eligibility of workforce employees. So each year, as people come in or people leave, there'll be a process for them to take applications, qualify people to live there and go through that whole process. So that burden won't be with this board, but you will put your imprimatur on it as you set that up and, and ask it to go forth and manage on your, on your interests. Next slide. So I wanted to just quickly touch on financing, which is a work in progress. And I think the main thing for tonight is to just remind us all that the primary funding mechanism that you as a board have control of is what's called certificates of participation. And, um, uh, we, we know that that is a common use of those kinds of funds to do this kind of project because you can essentially use the rent from the building as the guarantee that you're going to be able to pay the debt back. It's, it's a loan. So that model's out there. It's been tested a lot. Our friends at KNN understand that and can explain a lot better than I can. But that's your, that's your primary tool to make this go. And, and it's not going to pay for the whole project. So you're going to need other monies. So you've got a bond measure that passed that includes language for providing a range of facilities in your district, including employee housing. And so you may choose to take future action to allocate some of that bond to the project. There's also monies that we think are coming toward the project once we are further down the city approval process. Uh, one is the fee that I mentioned that would otherwise go to the city, which would come to us from Sobrato for those extra affordable units. And, um, we also expect that when we do the, when we go back and update the appraisals for the two properties, our parcel is larger and probably has a plus delta in your favor of some number of dollars that will come back to you as part of this. So there's still probably 22% or so of the meeting the full cost to be resolved as a result of ongoing negotiations with various entities that your board is providing direction to. Um, and so as we get further down the process, we're going to be working hard to get some of those negotiations wrapped up and some agreements written so that you know when you get to the point of making the final decisions, I can show you where the money is going to come from and we know what we can expect to pay for it. And with that, let's move to the next slide. This is probably not worth looking at because it's really small, but this is in your packet as well. It's, it's an overall timeline as best we understand it. Um, and it shows that with all the things that are ahead to be done, including construction, that we can probably get you to open a new housing facility at the end of 2029. So as is typical with big developments in urban areas, this, this work takes time. This is not a quick project. And there's a lot to do. But, um, that's true of any project, any housing. In fact, that's part of the problem of housing in California is it does take a long time. Let's jump to the next slide because that's where I'd really like to wrap up and turn it back to the board. So I wanted to highlight that basically it, let's assume that we get a, a complete designation for our application this month, at the end of this month. I'd like to just kind of map out what you as a board can expect to see coming towards you. So, um, the first and foremost activity will be to finish negotiating with the Sobrato organization on what we're calling the property exchange agreement. And that will be essentially an umbrella agreement between the school district and Sobrato of all the details of financing, contributions, who's going to do what with construction, the roles and responsibilities. So we've got a term sheet that is in draft form that you all have been giving direction to from time to time. Uh, we really expect to get fully into those negotiations and to try to wrap those up very quickly in the new year. Um, we'd also need an update of the previous property appraisal, which I mentioned. We're going to need to update our cost estimates. You have a cost estimator through your, um, your legal firm that provides those kinds of analyses. They've done it once so they can go back and simply refresh it. And, um, we're going to need to think about tools to help your future nonprofit set rents that are pegged to the local market. So we're going to need some sort of a rental survey system out there in the residential world that they can rely on. And then there's going to be, you know, essentially more work to do on the financing plan to make sure it's really sound. I think that it's important that the board in the new year begin discussing, how do you want to set up your housing corporation? What do you want it to do that's similar or different from other models that we've seen? And to really be thinking about people in your community that you might recruit and appoint to that board. So we'll ask you to get going on that. And then, um, probably the hardest part ahead of us is for us and Sobrato together to go negotiate with the city to do what's called a development agreement for the project. We're going to need a housing agreement. And we're going to probably have other agreements that spin out of the conditions of approval that would be put forward to the city council in June. So there's going to be a lot of work directed at getting agreements in place with the city. And it's going to be different than other agreements districts your district has had with cities because this is the real estate development world and the agreements that go with that as opposed to the more programmatic and community things that you do together. But the good news is, is there's a sound relationship there between this district and the city. So we're starting on a, on a good basis. It's still going to be a lot of work. And then if we can go to the next slide. And then like second quarter, April to June, we're going to need to finalize financing plan with you. We're going to need to get out into the public and engage them in this project so that they understand what's being proposed. So as it gets closer to hearing with the city council, the city council can hear, like, is my community behind this? What are their interests? What do they think the benefits are that this brings? So there's, there's a public engagement piece ahead of us. Um, and we'll ask you by, by that time to be thinking about appointing your, your housing corporation board. And then, um, you know, just continuing to work on all the details that need to be worked out. And, um, what we, the team that you have hoped to do is to keep it as focused, um, on policy at the board level and let us take care of all the details so that you all can stay with your educational mission. So that's, that's our aspiration. That's what we're here to do. And I think with that, what I'd like to do is simply have the next slide and we'll segue into, uh, questions and comments from the board and others. Again, I've got Blake here from your financing group and I've got, uh, Rob Tercini on the end of the line from Sobrato. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, we do have a public comment on this if we want to take, do you want to take that now and then? Okay. So, um, Erin Washburn.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Washburn. My pronouns are they, them, and theirs. I'm the president of the Redwood City Teachers Association. And, um, uh, that last part you said about you taking care of like everything you just explained and it's just your responsibility to make sure that like the policy is in place, right? Um, that, that was nice to hear because I'm listening to your presentation. I'm like, wow, that's a, that's a lot. Like, we're already running a school district here. Like, we're going to also take on a housing project now. Okay, that, but you, you got the housing part and the construction and all that. So that, that's good to hear. Um, because my, my primary focus is like questions like, how would we divvy the housing up, you know? Uh, how long can you stay in the housing? How long do you have before you have to move out? If you lose your job and then obviously you would lose the housing as well. Like, what's the, the time? You know, these are the kind of things that I'm thinking about and the things that probably teachers are thinking about also. Um, I, I would, I would love to know how much of it, well, I just want to throw this out there, but percentage wise, thinking about teachers that would be able to, to move into these 60 units, it looks like. I don't know how we could guarantee that the other 48 would even be Redwood City, uh, School District employees in there, right? But 60 we have for sure. Um, I know our CSCA siblings, they would take the majority of them, right? Our union siblings are in our classified union. Um, and then, but when we're thinking about our CTA members, teachers, educators, um, how is this going to attract new teachers? And what kind of new talent is it going to attract, right? Is there a possibility to have like a percentage of, uh, new teachers but to our district, but not necessarily brand new teachers, right? Because we do want to bring talent into the district, people who have some, some know-how and who have done this job for, for, for a time. Also thinking about, we also do want to bring in brand new teachers, you know, because they're the ones who are going to need the support the most. I, I work with two teachers right now. One of them are brand new teachers. One of them commutes to Hayward and back every day. And that's a long way to go to get for, you know, every day instead of planning or working in the community where she could be here, she's, she's traveling two hours a day, right? To come back and forth. And then the other new teacher I work with has a whole nother job that she does after she leaves Redwood City and she gives private lessons. And maybe she would still do that. I don't know. It just seems like our, our newer teachers, people in their first, you know, first through fifth year would definitely need some kind of prioritization. And then a percentage of teachers who, like myself, who maybe, who have, who are higher along in the pay scale, but would like to save money so that I can eventually buy a house here. So could I potentially be a person that would, that would benefit from having this, this housing, right? So that I could put that money away for five years or something and then have it set up, um, so that I could continue to stay in this community. So these are the, you know, how, how long would people be able to stay there? Five to 10 years, I think. If we were trying to build loyalty as part of this, you know, if we want to make sure teachers are loyal to the Redwood City Teachers, to the Redwood City School District, there would have to be a certain amount of time that people would have to be allowed to stay. I think five to 10 years, um, should be an allotment.
So Erin, sorry, your three minutes are up. If you want to just wrap it up.
Yeah, sure. I think this could be very beneficial to teachers in the Redwood City School District. I think it could be very beneficial to a lot of people. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. So, um, I'll open up to the board with questions or comments. For Peter or?
I, I just wanted to, thank you, Erin, for being here and speaking, both for yourself, but also on behalf of some teachers. And I know I've been talking to teachers the last couple of weeks and, um, Mike and I actually were out at a school site today and talked to a principal who was very excited about the opportunity for housing to be able to attract and retain, mostly to retain some of the newer teachers that might be willing to bunk up or stay with their parents for the first year or two, but then they really do want their own home, you know, their own apartment. And so, um, in talking to some of them, they'd be very excited about this. So I think, Erin, you bring up all the questions that we've been talking about. And a lot of those questions, I think, in terms of uh, kind of getting them all up there, could be, uh, kind of done with the foundation, with the educational community. But of course, the board in consultation with Dr. Baker and, um, Peter and, you know, other, others would basically be making some of those decisions. So, uh, there's some models out there, uh, from other, uh, school districts in terms of what they're doing. Some are doing five, seven, nine years. Um, so those are things we'd need to decide. Partly it would be, well, what's the interest level? Because you want, you'd want to maximize it to, to as many people as we could, right? Because if you were doing like 10 or 12 years, then that would limit the number of people. But if you did five years, then more people would have an opportunity, right? So yeah, those are things that we'll have to decide. But there would be some time limit. And I know that in some of the neighboring districts, what they're doing is they're actually bringing in uh, professional financial planners right into the home to meet with employees to say, hey, you're saving this amount of money. You know, here's our recommendation. If you want to be saving for a down payment, here's what you could do over the course of five or seven years. And then, let's see, one of the other, um, what was what?
There was 108 units.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I also wanted to, to speak to the affordable units. Uh, we are confident that, uh, we'll be able, our employees can meet the affordable. And then the other ones are, are, um, our intention is that it would be the 65 to 70%. I think that's right, right? Six, 65 to 70% reduction from market rate. But if you look at the affordable units, a lot of the ones we'll have are moderate, um, affordable. And actually, most of our classified staff, uh, many of our teachers would still meet those. And I don't know, Peter, if you remember, if you want to speak to the, just sort of what we know today. Of course, it changes over time, but.
I'm, I'm really glad for the question because I should have said, uh, when I was walking through this, that one of the things that we've, at your direction, we've pressed with the city staff is that we're happy to comply with the ordinance. Uh, that's a law. And we're actually going above and beyond that so we can keep more of the money that would otherwise flow away from the project. But we're basically saying, under the Teacher Housing Act of 2016, you, the district and your, your corporation will retain control of all the units. So you'll be able to take as first come, uh, first refusal essentially, any employee in the district who might fit into those different categories. And only then, if you can't fill it with your own employees, you would probably want to have an agreement with, say, the high school district or another district somewhere close by so that they could take advantage. But you'll have, it'll be 108 employees of this district, assuming that there's the demand and it sounds like there certainly will be. So yeah, that's, that's good news. And we think the city is, they're going to agree with that. It's just taken a while to push them in that direction because they typically like to open it up to any, uh, they, you know, it's, it's a community preference, a local preference. Well, your employees work here in the city and a lot of them already live here. So you're, you're in a good position to do that.
Yeah. So one of the things that, um, is provided to the school district is that we have first priority to house our own employees. But if we got into a situation where for whatever reason, we didn't have enough employees interested in those spots, as Peter just said, we can open those up. And then we can actually charge, well, the affordable units, we'd still have to charge affordable ones, but the other ones, we could charge market rate if we wanted to. But, you know, remember, we did a survey back, was it 2019 or 2020? Oh, I, I think it's. No, um, 2020, we did a survey out to employees. And at that point, I think we had about 166 employees who were potentially interested. And then we know, I mean, my guess is we have, we could read, you know, we could do another survey and we've kind of talked about it. But my guess is that number is only going to go up because we've had a lot of more senior employees retire and those are the ones who had lived in the community for 30 or 40 years and many of them owned homes. So they didn't even fill out the survey because they weren't interested in it. And so we've had a lot more new employees, younger employees, employees at the lower salary schedule. So I would think there'd only be more. And then you'd asked about the percentage of, because this is also a question that comes up. Um, and then you'd asked about the percentage of, because this is also a question that comes up. Um, the board would be able to set the percentage, so there'd be a conversation around that. I know that Jefferson High School District, their, uh, goal is that it would be, um, the percentages would be similar to the number of employees in the classified area and then the number of employees in the certificated. And that they're trying to kind of keep it like that. Um, so that's sort of one way to go is you could say, okay, we have, you know, forty percent in here and, and forty percent in here. And you might have twenty percent that are higher level, you know, managers or, I mean, that's not a good estimation. But I think that gives you an idea that that would, that there would be room for both, you know, classified and certificated. Okay, I think, I think I want to just try to answer some of the questions because we have talked about that. I don't know if I missed anything, but feel free.
Peter, I did have one question about the, um, when does the, actually, I was really surprised in the timeline that, uh, setting up the Educational Housing Corporation happened so early in the process. Because I had the con- sort of thought that happened much closer to, yeah, that it happened much closer towards occupancy. Um, so when does responsibility kind of shift? When did they start taking on responsibility? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, because I like the model that you're talking about, about board, this board, setting the policy and you'll take care of the construction. But the reality is that there'll be, you know, work and distraction to do. And when does that actually start shifting on to that corporation instead of?
Well, that's a, a really good question and something I've been trying to figure out, uh, what makes the most sense. So it seems to me that based on what we've heard from other districts, some of them wish they had started earlier to get that set up so that you kind of grow a knowledge base within a group of people that you're eventually gonna hand the baton to. So there's that benefit. So, and that also gives a sounding board for some of the policy and rules questions, like some of the questions that Erin asked, so that they can start really processing on that, doing their own networking, having their own discussions, and try to get it as well-defined and as, um, sort of vetted within the community as possible before you get close to, oh, my gosh, the building's getting built. Now we gotta really scramble and, and get applications out and so forth. So ultimately, you, the board, will decide when to, to move ahead with that. But I didn't want to, uh, put off you having the conversation of how do you want to do that? When do you want to do it? And what's that look like? So, um, seems like it's one of those things, you've got a long, uh, lead time here for construction to happen. Take advantage of it, because there's probably people out there in your community that you'd like to have involved. And they may know a lot about this that could help, um, answer questions as we move ahead.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Um, you know, going through the timeline, I'm really glad that the project has expanded to more units because I really feel like even that's probably not going to meet the demand. Um, and, you know, as much as I support like housing and get projects in Redwood City in particular, affordable housing, you know, historically, that hasn't really been in the scope of a school district to kind of look at. So it's nice to see that we're putting those kind of, kind of efforts in place. And it's kind of an opportunity here, though, that's more than just about building affordable housing. It's, you know, it's this unique opportunity to kind of attract and retain a strong workforce. Um, and so I just always think back to that study session where the Jefferson Union trustees were talking about the thirty percent, um, of their positions they couldn't fill. And then once they opened up their project, uh, they would get a hundred percent fill rate. It may not have been thirty percent, but it was some.
Twenty to thirty percent.
Yeah, twenty to thirty percent, year over year. They would go with, um, yeah. And then, then a hundred percent after they opened and filled their, their, um, housing project. And so, you know, it's a testament. And, and of course, we're not the only, um, district that's looking at it. I mean, within the county, Jefferson Union, Jefferson Elementary just opened up. Um, there's other districts within the county that are looking to do this. We've seen other bonds passed in the Bay Area that are doing it. I know at C S B A, they've run, la- last year, they ran, uh, um, a talk about it. And I swear, there was like over a hundred people in there, um, looking to see, you know, from districts all across the state, trying to learn about this. It's a, it's a constant topic about how to build this, um, housing act. So, you know, the Teacher Housing Act of two thousand and sixteen gave us, gave the, um, you know, allows schools to sort of leverage public funds to, um, you know, to go after housing projects. Uh, and those public funds are, are part of, you know, bonds are part of it. Um, so, you know, I think there's still a lot of open questions about this project. Um, the biggest one is about the financing piece. I'm not gonna, um, presuppose how that's gonna work out. I know you're still negotiating it, um, but I think that's one of the things that we'll want to look at and see how that all comes together. Um, but I think it's pretty exciting, uh, how far it's come along. And, and thank you, Alisa and Janet, for, uh, starting this, the, the work here and all that you've done on, going on up until right now and for another few weeks. Thanks.
Um, you know, one other thing I just want to mention on the financing, because one of the questions that comes up is, um, how does this impact the general fund or o- operational budget that pays for salaries and educational academic programs? The reality is, uh, we've talked about it time and time again. There would be a firewall, like we are not going to be using general fund monies. And so the monies that would be used is a loan that's specific for this sort of thing. It's just like a mortgage that you would take out on your house. So that loan will be paid off by the rents. But because we're, um, our intention is to, to make these affordable for our staff to live in and they're not market rate, the loan will not be able to cover all the rents. That's why you don't see a bunch of developers wanting to do a whole lot of affordable housing because it actually doesn't pencil out just with the regular sort of loan or mortgage. You need additional funds coming in. So the additional funds that the district is planning on using or has, has talked about using is for private funds. We have a public-private partnership with Sabrato. Um, so they're definitely chipping in some money for the project. And then we've also talked to a few other developers who might be interested in, in, um, chipping in for the project. We know that we have the, the loan that I talked about. We have the bond, um, that the voters did pass that has language in there that, uh, covers these sorts of facilities, school facilities. Um, and then, um, there's also some opportunity for some money to come back from the city because we're doing extra affordable units. And then, as Peter mentioned, the, uh, the differential in the property. So in other words, it will not touch, it's a whole different pot of money. So if we do not do this project, it's not like there's additional money for the educational side of the house. This is all being paid for in a separate sort of way.
Thank you. Those were, I think, all the pieces I wanted to highlight too. Um, so are there other questions or?
I think it's good that we're cross-checking references for other districts that are doing this. I think it'll be important to do that, not just for ones that are new at it or think about doing it, but also those that have been at it for a while. Um, you know, in my own research, there's been a couple of different districts that have gone about this in ways that, uh, have ended up regrettable. So it'd be good if we can make sure we learn from their mistakes so that, uh, well, we'll make plenty of mistakes on our own, but it's good not to repeat the mistakes of others, right? Um, till we go in eyes wide open. Uh, to Mike's point, I really like the aspects of shifting left, the handing off of the baton. That was something that I've heard pretty consistently from a number of different school districts is that that lead up to opening requires, has required other districts to spend an inordinate, inordinate amount of time uh, around everything from construction management to policy setting. And if there's a separate, you know, somewhat time firewall, you talk about financial firewall, like I'm also interested in the time firewalling. So if there's, if there's a separate group of people that can kind of time firewall, get into the weeds around construction management and housing policy, uh, that would help alleviate some of my concerns around the board getting diverted from its primary focus, which is the educational achievement of our students, um, whi- which I think it's really important that forever, for all the other, uh, putatively important and shiny stuff, uh, especially with large dollar figures attached, that we stay laser-focused in our discussions on the students and the teachers and the staff and educational achievement in this district. So, um, I, I, I like the idea of doing some of that handoff earlier.
I want to point out too, on the construction management part, um, the one thing that all the other school districts don't have that we have is the partnership with Sabrato. Um, and this, this is their realm, they're developers. So, um, that's a huge benefit to our district to have them, um, helping with that. I don't know if there's anything else to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think, I think, um, David, I think your, your point is excellent that we want the board and Dr. Baker and everybody around this table and in this room to stay focused on education. So, yeah, I mean, in some ways, it makes a lot of sense then to start and to kind of shift some of that. And I did want to just mention with Sabrato, one of the things that's been great is early on and all throughout, they, they have architects that we've been talking to and seeing design plans and layouts of potential units and stuff like that. The one thing we have talked about is when we get to that level of design, um, and let's, let's assume maybe it's a foundation that's taking the lead on that with maybe one board member who's really interested in it, who maybe is volunteering to help that. But we definitely want staff input. I would like, you know, teacher and classified to also be a part of that, to make sure that the units are gonna be the kind of things that people want to live in, right? And if you've been to the, to some of the other units, um, like at Jefferson High School District, they are beautiful. And the staff really loves them. They have community rooms. They have, you know, I mean, they're really nice places to live that they want to live. So anyway, it'll be important to.
Making sure that the workforce is involved with discussions about.
Exactly.
Their, the residences seems very important, even right from the get-go.
But I do agree. I think that's great if, you know, kind of keep the focus of this group on the academics.
No questions, obviously. Uh, thank you, Peter, for all the work that you've done. And to our two lovely board members, maybe you guys don't have to go. So I appreciate it. Um, and then, of course, I wanted to just say, um, obviously, the surveys went out to certificate staff members. And I'm just wondering, um, how the communication is going to be kept where both classified and certificated, um, members know that this is happening, right? Because sometimes you tend to maybe read an email and kind of not pay attention. So if we could just make sure that everyone is aware so that everyone that could can take advantage of the project.
And I'm glad to see we have Maria and Erin in the audience. So hopefully, they can also, um, make sure that their membership knows. And then, of course, we have Wendy Kelly at H R who can probably help get out information. Yes, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Maria, for always being here to help out. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks for being here. All right. Moving on to twelve point two, welcome, North Star. Thanks for being here.
So tonight, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have Erin and her team, uh, present today North Star Academy's, um, board presentation. So welcome, Erin, and, um, you're gonna do great. And this is our first presentation of the year, so she'd probably be a little nervous. Told her she has, she's gonna do great. All right, all yours.
Thank you, President Lawson, trustees, Superintendent Baker, cabinet and community members. Thank you for the honor of being here tonight to celebrate North Star's successes and share with you our plans and initiatives for this academic school year. So our site, SIPS A, is aligned to the three district LPAC goals. Goal one, as you are aware, focuses on supporting our students' social, emotional learning needs, their, uh, attendance and their behavior or suspension rates. So what we notice when we look at our chronic absentee data is that we have seen a half percent decrease from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. And we continue to trend down this year. Next slide. We do notice that we have two subgroups that need a little support in this trending down endeavor. And we have some plans that I will share in a subsequent slide to address this need. Our suspension rate is also trending down and we, that is carried forth into this academic school year. So when you look at our suspension rate by subgroups, it illustrates the trend is decreasing, uh, as mentioned previously. We're excited by the decrease and we recognize that the work that we put into place last year to support this trend continues into this year. So the next slide will highlight this work that we are doing to support our scholars in these areas. To support our students in their social, emotional learning, um, and their social, emotional needs, we have piloted a new curriculum for the district called Wayfinder. It is a, um, it is applicable to all of our grade levels, third through eighth. The teachers have access to the Wayfinder platform and the scholars have Wayfinder workbooks. We have rolled out, um, this curriculum happening in our life skills class. Our teachers, uh, are accessing both the full lessons and the shorter activities. Mr. Havy and I are accessing this curriculum to support our staff in their endeavors and trends we see with behaviors. So Inclusive Schools Week is coming up the first week of December. We were able to pull a download of all activities and lessons promoting inclusivity and email that out to our staff so they can start planning to embed those activities within their curriculum. Um, on the right-hand side, you're, you'll see our screen team work. So our screen team meets at a minimum bi-weekly. We go over behavior data for our students, attendance data and any counseling referrals that have come in. We review the data and analyze for trends and then set next steps. Next, next steps can take a variety of approaches, whether it be teacher support, parent contact, perhaps transportation support if we have a student struggling with attendance. With, um, we have our McKinney Vento bus passes that we are able to offer. And also the district provided transportation for some of our students if needed.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Jacob Havy. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, so I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our L cap goal number two. So obviously, you can see by June of two thousand and twenty-seven, our goal is to have fifty-five percent of our second through eighth grade E Ls progress by a minimum of one level on the LPAC. And we will be able to measure that by the summative LPAC assessment. Additionally, we hope to increase our reclassification rate to twenty percent and then decrease our long-term E Ls to ten percent. So on this slide, you will see our LPAC level growth. There are three years of cohort data. You'll see twenty-one, twenty-two data. We actually didn't have any classified E L students. So twenty-two, twenty-three data you'll see in orange and the twenty-three, twenty-four data is in green. And we recognize the percent decrease from the twenty-two, twenty-three cohort to the twenty-three, twenty-four cohort. So we've been taking steps and implementing, uh, different strategies this school year to address that, which is on the next slide. So how are we supporting our multilingual learners at North Star? Well, first of all, we have a designated E L D class. What's new this school year is our absolutely wonderful M T S S Tosa, Ms. Karen Inahosa. Uh, she comes to us with a breadth of knowledge from Redwood City School District. She was a longtime reading interventionist and also did E L D class support. Uh, she pulls small groups weekly. She walks them to the library, uh, where they do focused instruction, where she's really able to differentiate based on the students' needs at that time. She utilizes not only the district curriculum, which is language power, but her long time as being a reading interventionist and E L D support. She's put together a little bit of curriculum that she's been able to support as well with the students, which is really looking at the similarities between Greek and Latin affixes and prefixes, which the kids just absolutely love. Um, we can tell that she's making an impact, not only by her interactions with the students around campus, but the laughter and the smiles we hear from her small groups. We're also supporting our multilingual learners by embedded E L D support. That's new this year as well. We are lucky enough to have our guest teacher, Ms. Tish Briggs, return to North Star this year. So last year, she was kind of able to set the foundation and start developing those relationships and cultivating her, uh, you know, place at North Star. And this year, she's actually doing push-in with our E L D students. So she's in the classrooms, receiving the content with the students. She's sitting with them. Uh, sh- her focus this year is really writing in vocabulary. So as the students are receiving the new content, the new vocabulary, she's sitting there with them, talking through how to understand it, how to get the knowledge from their brain, through their pencil, onto the paper. She's a recent graduate of Berkeley University with an English Lit major, so she's really passionate about it too. Um, so just some data as well. We have fifty-five multilingual learners. Eleven of them are designated as E L Ls. Twenty-five of those are R F E P monitored and we have nineteen R F E P fully exited. And as you all well know, we are having a ceremony tomorrow evening, which we will be on stage celebrating two of our scholars who are reclassifying. So that's just a bit of how we're supporting our multilingual learners.
Anna, if you could go back to that last slide, one piece that I just want to highlight for you, the difference between last year and what is new this year. The E L D model we had in place last year was that Tish, our guest teacher, was providing the designated E L D. However, when she was needed to do her role as a guest teacher and substitute, those classes were then canceled. We flipped that model this year and Ms. Inahosa's designated E L D is sacred time. We don't, we don't. We don't, we don't cancel those classes. Tish is providing this embedded support in content classes as available when she's not subbing. So we've, we've really put the focus on protecting that designated ELD dime for our students. LCAP goal three focuses on our ELA and math scores on iReady and CASP. And I'm going to take us through all of the data slides and then talk about our action steps as the final slide. So overall in ELA, we did experience a 1.4% decrease last year, which comes out to approximately eight students. We have committed next steps this year that we believe will address this decrease. And like I mentioned, we'll talk about that in the, um, in a subsequent slide. We are going to address students who are, have decreased and students who we have seen on other measures are below grade level. When we dive deeper into our data, we notice that we have two subgroups that are scoring below our school, um, average. We have very intentional plans to support these subgroups as well. So our cohort data shows a slight decrease or minimal increase for a few grade levels. Again, we have very focused and intentional work. We are working with our staff to really dive in to the data and understand what we are seeing and the trends and the causes behind that. And that is somewhat new work for our staff, but they are taking it on this year. And, um, we, I will quantify that a little bit later. On iReady, we are trending on target. We have currently 10% of our students who are below grade level and that over the past three years is pretty on target for the fall. Our spring data does look different and we anticipate and project out that it will be different again this year. That we should see a decrease in those, that 10%. For math, we had a half percent increase this year. And this was a year where we were implementing a new curriculum in math, 3.5. So we're very excited to see what kind of an increase we will see this year. We're projecting another increase as our staff, our educators get more comfortable and familiarized with the new K5 curriculum, 3.5 for us, and are able to dig deeper into the challenging aspects of that illustrative math curriculum. We also see that our two subgroups, um, do trend lower in math as well as language arts. And our cohort data for math does show some fluctuation, just like language arts across some grade levels or, um, uh, cohorts of students. The fluctuations are minimal, but are still there. So what are we doing to address this as a step? Oh, sorry. I ready is next. Our math iReady shows that we are decreasing the number of students who are below grade level by 3% this year. Again, with a new curriculum implemented last year, that is really something to celebrate. So to address all the data points that we just went over, we have several initiatives that we have put into place to support our focused students, those subgroups that we identified, but also this work will benefit all students at North Star. So the first item we have is our data, per data professional learning communities. We are doing six to eight week long data cycles as an initiative from the district. At our site so far, we've spent seven and a half hours collaboratively as a staff analyzing our data, various data points and planning for addressing the trends that we have identified. We're looking not only at the data we reviewed, but also digging deep into those iReady and CASP scores, looking at domains, looking at specific students who we need to support and what can we do? What can we embed in our instruction to support that work? Um, additionally, we are undertaking a staff book study. We are reading advancing differentiation and working on unpacking and internalizing and then implementing what we're learning from that book. So far we've had two and a half hours of staff time in that book study. The reason that we have chosen advancing differentiation is we need, with, with all the data trends that we saw, we decided as a leadership team last year that we wanted to focus on instructional strategies and how we are supporting individual learners and the different learning styles within our classrooms. One of the best way to do that differentiated work is to learn about different instructional strategies we can use. Um, so if you look at the last column, our focus for the year is instructional strategies, hand in hand with our data. So we're analyzing data, we're pulling our trends, we're digging really deep to see what specific areas and targets our scholars need support with. And then we are researching and discussing and collaborating on instructional strategies that we can put into place to make those goals. Additionally, we have professional development and we have two wonderful professional development, uh, items this year. We have Dr. Richard Cash providing specific PD for our site. Um, through our Measure U, we are able to have him. He, Dr. Cash worked with North Star several years ago and is back because a lot of our staff has changed. And we have a few staff members left who worked with him prior, but we are working with him again. He is providing whole staff PD targeted on educating gifted and talented students and working through compacted curriculum and what that looks like in the classroom. What is best practice when we are doing that work? So far, Dr. Cash has been with us two days, visiting classrooms and has delivered one staff PD. He will be back in January for a full day PD and then spend two days working with our grade levels, teams, planning and our departments. We also have Carolyn Williams, who is with us tonight as our teacher coach. Carolyn works individually with teachers. She's onsite two days a week. And her role is to support our teachers in ensuring that there is consistent um, and focused implementation and growth around our initiatives and our plans. And also professionally, teachers are professional educators or professional beings and they have their own goals for the year. So Carolyn is there to make sure that we are working on our site initiatives as well as our teachers' professional initiatives. Like I said a little bit earlier, we are really confident that our projected outcome for this focused work will lead to proficiency increases for our scholars and we are excited to see how they perform in the spring. Thank you. Are there questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation and for being here tonight. Board have questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. So North Star is interesting, right? Because you've got 100% pupils that, uh, know how to test really well, right? And these generally are folks who are going to excel, even if you put them under a rock. So what I would love to see is data that shows that we're doing better than putting them under a rock. And it was great to see that the populations were continuing to test pretty well, but they didn't really show me much in terms of progress, right? In terms of for every calendar year, uh, are, are they making at least one advance in grade level? So if, if you get a student who comes in two grades ahead and they exit the school year a grade and a half ahead, they would still just show up and the green is like everything's fine, uh, even though maybe they were not on the ideal learning trajectory. So is there data about the rate at which your students are making academic progress?
I don't have the data ready tonight, but I can track that with iReady. That I think would be the best tool to give us that and I can get that ready for you and send that over.
That would be fantastic.
Thank you.
I have a more general question, which is just, uh, then notice that North Star really focuses on using compaction versus acceleration. And generally in the literature, uh, looking at gifted education, there's some fair amount of evidence for acceleration, but it doesn't seem like studies have found that there's much advantage for gifted pupils of using compaction. So why is it that we use compaction instead of acceleration?
So I think that the term compacted curriculum is what's often used when, when discussing North Star. But what it truly is, the best way I can explain it is that, that learning pyramid, right? The lower two tiers are the conceptual, or the factual and procedural, uh, practices. And then that top triangle is the conceptual. What we do by compacting our curriculum and kind of moving quickly through those bottom two tiers is we invert the triangle. And for our students, we spend more time in the conceptual level, a stage of learning, allowing them to go deeper into the concepts and really grasp and push their understanding of those concepts. So they're later able to apply them in, in various ways.
Thank you. Um, it was really neat to hear about some of the new interventions. I think Dr. Baker knows that is something I like to press all the principles on is like, what's new this year? What'd you try? How'd it work out? And it's totally cool if some of the experiments didn't work out because we're, we're figuring out how to, how to optimize, uh, learning here. So it sounds like illustrative math, cautious thumbs up, you know? That, that's sort of something I got from the presentation. So glad that seems to be landing well. A really cool to hear about peer observations. When I visited with RCTA, that was something that they were really hankering for across the district was, you know, increased number of peer observations and feedback. Sounds like their teachers are getting that at North Star and that's also, you know, cautious thumbs up.
I walked in to observe a fourth grade science class and found the eighth grade algebra teacher observing an instructional strategy being implemented. It was really wonderful to see.
That's fantastic, but it'd be great if we could see that, uh, across some, some more places as well. Um, I, I, while you were here, I, uh, ordered advancing differentiation. I'm going to go and, and take a look through that. Uh, I would love to know, uh, what some of the key learnings that, uh, you found from the reading group were.
So we're still, we just finished chapter two. Um, December 7th, we will have our staff meeting where we go over chapters three and four. And one of the things that we really took away from the first two chapters are the need to dig and the need to intentionally plan for the different learning styles, not just, um, proficiency level. Oh, sorry, proficiency levels, but also the learning styles within our classrooms.
Cool. Um, last question for you. Uh, I, I know I'm the annoying question guy, but, um, what is it that we could do to make North Star a more compelling offering for our Latino population? Cause you mentioned 55 multilingual learners and that's great, but that's also only about 10% of your 527 pupils, uh, which isn't really fully representative of the community here, here in our district. So the resources that you're using to, uh, help offer English instruction to those folks, that was clear. That was in the presentation. But I'm almost more talking about like the sales aspect of, of getting a larger number of applicants from the community.
So I think that Sarah Shackel, the former administrator, laid the groundwork for some really great, um, changes and initiatives. Universal testing is one step in the right direction. So is transportation. Um, I really think that one of the benefits, we have a Spanish speaking office manager now. So we have a direct point of contact for families when they have questions about testing or admissions. Um, we also went to the Bayside Schools and did a, or joined a cafecito where we explained to the parent population there about North Star and how to go through the process. Um, sharing a school site with McKinley allows us to access the McKinley Family Center, which is I think the next piece that we need to leverage in order to further support our families who, um, are in one of those subgroups that need a little bit more support.
Those are awesome actions. Uh, I, I would love to see year over year progress. If you could take a look at the kind of applicant pool and if we could see that moving in, in the right direction, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
No, and those, those are good questions. I think I, first of all, thank you, Erin and Jacob. First of all, for stick, you know, being here for 90 minutes of other board business. Yeah, on a school night. So we're going to try our hardest not to take too much time, but really, really appreciate, um, you coming here tonight and, and speaking to us. I, I did want to just sort of follow up on the illustrative math. Just since you had mentioned it as, hey, we're really positive about it and we're looking forward to seeing the growth about it. Like what, what do you think is, is really working well? Like what, what are the strong parts of it? And then maybe what's not quite working maybe yet, or, uh, you know, might be a challenge even in the future.
Yeah. So the things that I've seen in the classrooms as I'm going through is the way that illustrative math sets up and prepares the students for the different collaboration points. They're working with pair, partners are working in groups and they raise their asks of the students in a way that makes them have a continued dialogue about the concept. They can't just say 75 and the conversation's done. They have to keep going through, uh, many different dialogue points to get there. Our next step is, um, working with staff development. Um, Anna Herrera and I have had this discussion and she has given us a day, her PD session for this, identifying the challenge points in the curriculum to support our students who need more challenge. We go deeper and we spend more time in that concept realm. And so just helping our staff get more familiarized and comfortable with the curriculum so they can easily access that challenge work is our next step.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for the presentation.
Um, Elisa, Cecilia, do you have any?
Again, like always, um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I love everything that you guys are doing at North Star. And, um, not necessarily questions. I mean, again, you, you guys are doing a good job. When you talked about the strategy that you played this year with your guest teacher, uh, not doing the designated EL, but instead focusing on the embedded because she has to teach. I mean, I like the approach. You actually, you guys are actually thinking what serves our students, eh, um, better. So I really appreciate that. And obviously the, um, two, what do you call it? The, the students are not meeting or are not there where they're supposed to be. I know that you guys are working on them, which is great because I mean, seeing that, obviously you guys have a low number. I know that's one of the questions that I asked Anna in my, um, email, um, which is the benefit, right? Of having less students. So I think that's great, which, um, benefits the students most. And then my comment just on the book, I, I thought it's great that you guys are doing this. I don't know, like if other school principals or leaderships are doing this because then, um, and again, I'm not saying that everyone has to do this, but I think it's a really good idea. Cause then you're working as a team, then you actually are seeing what you can improve at your school site. So thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Williams. Again, um, I will never ever forget that you helped so much when my son was at Kennedy. So thank you. And I'm glad that you're still around serving our community. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you so much for the presentation. And again, thank you for sitting here for so long. Hopefully you learned something about the, the couple of facility things we were talking about. Anyway, I always, I always love, um, visiting North Star and of course hearing from you tonight. And Erin, thank you so much for stepping into the leadership role, uh, last year. Really appreciate that. Jacob, thank you for being there. And Carolyn, it's always so great to see you and I'm with Cecilia. Thank you so much for still supporting our teachers and our administrators. And you just have such a wealth of information. And so we're so lucky to have you, um, uh, doing that. So thank you. Um, some of the things I was going to comment on or ask about, my colleagues have already done so. So I won't repeat it since it is getting late on a school night. Um, but I did want to just say, I'm really glad that you're, um, kind of doubling down, or not doubling down, but you're sort of reinvigorating the differentiation because I do think that has been a part of the school. But you know, you have new staff coming on. So if you don't keep up with it, then it's easy to sort of lose that. I also just think there's a lot more research now and you're, you're not talking about just differentiating on the academic like piece, but also on the learning style, which I think is really important. Um, and one of the things that I've seen at North Star, which I think doesn't show up in this data, because it kind of responds to what you said, is that you're right, like these kids, like we're looking at whatever the test is, whether it's the SPAC or whether it's, you know, um, iReady, uh, and so most of them are testing really well. And so what you're not seeing is all the other stuff, which are going to be what the teachers are doing in the classroom or the, um, people supporting the teachers. And what I've seen there at least is that, uh, you have a lot of, um, independent, very curious learners, which I know you're, you're like, that's one of your big things is we need kids to own their learning. And you see a lot of that at North Star. And so there may be an assignment and they kind of complete that, or they take it to a whole other level. Next thing you know, they're doing like a graduate, you know, research project on whatever the assignment was. Um, and so that's not necessarily going to show up in this data, but I do think it would be great to help sort of display that in some way, because that is going on, I know. Um, and then I also was just curious, are you still accelerating in math?
We are.
So maybe you could just speak to that, because I think that is one area where you do some acceleration.
So all of our math from sixth grade on is accelerated. So the sixth grade covers all of sixth grade and half of seventh. Seventh grade covers half of seventh and all of eighth, and then eighth grade takes algebra.
Do you still have students going over to Sequoia or is that not happening anymore?
Partnership is no longer.
Yeah, that was a great partnership when it happened. I know. That could be, because literally the kids could walk across the street, um, over to Sequoia High School and do that. Anyway, that, you know, there's, there's new leadership, new board members over there. So there may be opportunities.
Let's ring the doorbell again.
So in conversation with a parent last weekend, what this, some scholars are doing summer after eighth grade is taking a summer geometry course so they can start trig as an, as a freshman. So, and yeah, it's, it's a lot that they do in between middle school to high school.
Yeah. Anyway, um, the pendulum swings. It'll swing back. Um, uh, and the only other thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to say, uh, to all And the only other thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to say, uh, to all the teachers and the staff at North Star and the parents, I just thank you so much. I know we have some online tonight, so I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting the students.
Thank you again for your presentation. Um, I, it's late, so I don't wanna repeat anything that's been said, but one thing I did wanna highlight, because I don't think I heard it said, a zero percent suspension rate, I think you need to be applauded for. I think that's, that's huge. And so thank you for highlighting, um, the work you're doing around that and keep it up, because that's fantastic. And I did wanna say, yeah, thank you to the community. I know there's a number of people online also. So thank you for sticking it out tonight with us.
I will be quick. Uh, I know it's getting late and should be, the work will be tomorrow. You know, Erin, Jacob, Carolyn, thank you so much for continuing work at, at North Star. And the book study club, you need to share that, you know, that time when we have not our admin meeting, but where it's more geared towards the principals and the principals share. So if you would take that time, both of you, and share what you have garnered from that book study and talk about some of the differentiation that you have brought forth, um, at the school site and what it looks like. So we're, we're doing that now at, not our regular site administrator meeting, but when we have another one, but it's called for the principals. And that's where a lot of the sharing goes on. So please do that. All right. And the other piece, just one, one quick piece about the Bayside. We are at the Bayside and we are doing, you know, the presentations and so forth and moving forward to see how many more students will want to go once they test. And the parents are for the most part, sometimes hesitant, but the big piece is the transportation. And I know we've got to do that. And the other piece that, that has helped you and thanks for mentioning, mentioning it is the family center. Cause a family center is integral. It really is. So thank you. Keep it up.
I also just wanna highlight that for our students who do receive the transportation, Enrique Calderon has been instrumental in helping us get those students enrolled in after school programs. So they are dropped off at an after school program where their parents can then pick them up when they're finished with their workday.
Yeah. And a great job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Yeah, you guys, we don't need a break. Okay. Thirteen point one, first reading and discussion of board policy and AR six one five three, school sponsored trips.
Good evening, everyone. We have quite a few board policies. Thank you so much to Janet and Alisa for your contributions on the board policy committee. We had our last one for this session, so we actually got a lot done. And tonight you will find these subsequent board policies that will, once again, of course, are originate from CSBA and are reviewed in advance. I wanna thank trustee Marquez for a couple typos she found with your minor governing board from board, but that's okay. We will get those corrected for the next time in two board policies. But the first one for tonight really is focusing on school sponsored field trips. It's an update and really includes information about out of country, um, trips that may occur into the future. So do there are any questions regarding this board policy? Thank you again for everyone for reviewing. I know you look at them in advance. There's a lot this time.
Okay, thirteen point two, uh, first reading and discussion of board policy four five seven, employee safety.
Yes. So this is part of an update, uh, once again, for our employee safety. As you know, we have a safety committee for our district and so it's apropos to have this board policy come and, um, be updated with some of the changes that are required. It's been quite a few years and so it's timely for this one. But the safety committee reviews workers' comp information and, um, various, you know, other safety hazards or potential safety hazards, a light that might need to be installed in a certain location and so forth. So are there any questions regarding this one?
We can probably take thirteen three and thirteen four together, uh, discussion policy, board policy four one, four one six one and four two six one.
Yes. So the different number, the, the numbers four one six one involve, uh, one classification certificated. And then the subsequent one is for classified employees. Any questions regarding updated information on leaves?
I mean, just to double check, I didn't really see any material difference between them, but in fact, it almost looked like they were word for word the same. Is that right?
Right. They are very, very similar. Um, two different CBAs, uh, collective bargaining agreements. But in general, regarding ed code and so forth, we had to differentiate.
Yeah, at least at the policy level, right?
So thirteen five and thirteen six, board policy four one one three point four and four two one three point four.
Same situation regarding the modified light duty assignment when there is an employee injured at work and we wanna get that person back to work right away, within the scope of their job description, being able to be flexible, uh, based on their limitations. So this would be new actually to our CSD.
Any questions? Okay. Let's see. Thirteen point seven, first reading and discussion of board policy four zero four zero, employee use of technology.
Yeah. So this one includes a little bit about AI in there. Uh, so I know that, um, that's something that's into our future. And so this board policy sets the stage for initial, um, tasks regarding employees' professional duties. So in the employee's workday and really in the act of being a teacher, what would be appropriate to guide their work? And students work down the line. So I think we're in an entry point for this, but it opened the door for it. Um, and copyright materials and so forth. And there, the, then it would also accompany an updated, um, employee acceptable use agreement, which we do every year, but this one would add new and updated language. And so we would need to send this out for an update to our employees.
Yeah. My only concern here was that the definition of what constitutes an open artificial intelligence system isn't really given in the document. So I, I can guess, but I, I think it probably would be best if we have a policy where, um, it's clear, like what, what is and isn't permissible use, because AI is gonna get woven into everything. And there's gonna be open models. There's gonna be closed models. There's gonna be local models, right? So if I pay for the chat GPT subscription, uh, am I allowed to, uh, turn on like a confidential query there? Where I can go and perform an input and get the output. And that's not a violation of this policy, because that neither the input or the output is used in further training data. But just, it would be good to have clarity.
Right. And I'm wondering if that can get flushed out in administrative regulation with, with specifics and probably need to be updated as time progresses. I feel like, you know, there's just new things very frequently. So yes, to that point, I, I would agree with that. I did try and search for, um, anything that a district is doing surrounding this. So relatively new, even this, this board policy update, that, um, I would need to get some guidance on that. So that, I can bring that.
My, my guess is your cut point is you don't want any of the prompts provided by teachers that include confidential information to be included as training data for some model and thereby potentially leaked. And I think that's the cut point for your definition of open.
Okay.
That's my best.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Good to know. Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you.
And thirteen point eight, first reading and discussion of board policy four one one three.
And this one, once again, is just an update, um, regarding, uh, teachers. This is already something that we do in practice anyway, is working within the guidelines of credentialing and qualified teachers. So, but it is an update. It's been a while. Any questions regarding this?
Was all the language that was added, did that come from CSBA or was it, okay? Yeah. Cause the one that I noticed that was added was the strategies for ensuring equitable access, um, which I thought was, was neat. And now I'm really curious, maybe we'll even find a, a session at AEC that talks about, if, if that's being adopted, like what other districts are doing and things like that.
Yes, that would be great if you could bring that back. I'd appreciate any information. Once again, those, that language is also in our update, our, uh, board policy on equity for human resources that was adopted in twenty twenty. So that ties in really nicely with this particular one, the updates. Thank you.
Makes me curious about the timing of, if we go and adopt this, when we'll start seeing some of these, um, reports, right? From the equitable distribution.
Well, actually I typically give those reports. However, this year, um, I did not do the side by side. So I can put that on the agenda for next time.
All right. Thank you, policy committee. It was a bunch that you got through. And the more you get through now, like happier everyone is in December.
And thank you once again for the tenure. I've worked so closely with Janet and Alisa. It's been, yeah, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate the thought partners.
Yeah, I've really enjoyed that committee. So.
Well, and thank you, Wendy, for all your leadership in that area, even with, uh, lack of staff to help you.
Yes, that was, uh, I appreciate the patience of the board because, um, that means a lot more is coming into the future. So we'll be ready. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You, fifteen point one, um, adoption of annual organizational meeting dates set for December seventeenth, May twenty-four at seven PM.
The, um, information is listed in the notice of organization. And then in the memo itself, um, we had talked about this earlier as with Jan, I think Alisa and regarding the rotation. It does not say in our board policy that, you know, um, we had talked about someone who had took out paperwork would be, take one spot and the next person would take the other, it has to go by lottery. And I made, uh, that certain by talking to council today. She said, yeah, you don't have that in your policy. Your policy says will be, um, if there are more than one new board member elected or appointed, there will be a lottery to determine the order of filling the board position. Well, so I'll just put names in a, in a, in a box, pull the name, who will take Mr. Weekly's spot. Then the other person will take Cecilia Marquez's spot. So she said, do that, do, take a number, write it down and.
You could just say like seat four and seat five.
Yeah, seat four and seat five. Exactly.
So is there an expectation that we come on that day, Janet and I, or are you just leading all the new people?
Kind of like an imaginary baton.
So, so, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. So Janet will call the meeting to order and then. Right. And then they'll just disappear.
There is a swearing in of, I guess, Mike and then, uh, Jan and also David.
Great. And have you reached out to the two new board members to let them know about the oath of office? And if they wanna have their family or friends there, it's kind of nice for them to do that. Yeah.
You'll have to hand him the gavel.
Okay. So this is an action item. We do need a motion on this.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Fifteen point two, adoption of resolution number ten, authorizing continued funding application for district California state preschool programs.
Right. And this is something that comes to us, um, you know, just about every year. And Mike, you got some questions for me. I'm looking up, working with Edna to get them to you and I'll have them for you during the next meeting. So the funding will continue. And this funding is entirely different, you know, from our general fund funding. So. Which we're very fortunate to have, because then we had to also support it. Gosh.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor? Perfect. Reports from board members. There's maybe who'd like to start this off.
I always forget to write them down, but, um, I went to the DLEC meeting on Monday, um, and I didn't count, I think there was like four or five parents, which is great, because then we, the different meetings, different parents come and represent schools. Um, they appointed someone to be the, um, word precedent next year. So that was great. And then Catherine was making sure, um, that she provided the information. I'm sorry. And then Jorge was there too, to speak. Um, I'm actually glad the parents are attending the meetings or are that I'm going to, I'm glad I'm going to be, hold on, it's late. I've been up since five in the morning, by the way. Cause every time I go, I just wanna make sure that they understand, like where we come from as board members. We're regular parent, you know, we're regular people, just like they are. So I make sure that every time I go, I tell them that just so that they could feel comfortable that we're not just the board members, right? We're community members, we're parents, we're parents. So I really appreciate the, um, the parents coming to join the meetings. And then of course, we have a male, because usually it's a lot of women. So it's been, right? Um, I'm glad we have two. Now we're gonna have three male representatives of the board. And other than that, I think that's it from the last time we were here. So I'll skip unless I remember something else. I apologize. Seriously, I'm like.
I went to the author illustrator fair at Orion, which was very nice. Uh, while I was there, I noticed that there were two, uh, outdoor chess boards painted on the tarmac that had worn many, many years ago. And so I was like, hey, it would be neat if we get those repainted. So Winnie's put in a work order and I purchased a outdoor chess set. So hopefully by the, in the next week and a half, two weeks, we'll actually have, uh, some outdoor chess that the kids can play at Orion.
All right. Well, I have, um, a number of things I was able to do. I did visit, uh, four of our school sites, um, with the principals and got to walk through classrooms and, oh my gosh, it's just so eye opening. And I really appreciate the principals and teachers and others for, um, accommodating me. So I was at MIT, at Henry Ford, at Adelante Selby, and then today Mike and I were at Hoover. And I have, um, a few follow-ups that I'll be following up with you on, on Monday when we meet. Just a few items that, um, I told the, the principals that I would follow up on, um, more minor things, um, or like class size, uh, things like that. So we did hear, uh, some questions about special ed and a few other things like that. Um, and Mike may wanna add a little bit more on Hoover. And then I also went to the Orion Author Illustrator Fair, which was great. Oh my gosh, I just love that. I realized, I think I've been going there for like twenty years or something. And, uh, anyway, and I, there's one author illustrator who's been going about as long. So I always get to see Alisa Cleven, who's there, who is one of my favorites. Um, and then I was on a panel with the Chamber Leadership Education. They had, they always have an education day and there were three board members and I was one of the board members and that was a lot of fun. These are about sixty or seventy up and coming leaders in the community through the chamber, nonprofit business, whatever. And I know we've sent people in the past, maybe one of the new board members might wanna go, who knows? Um, I think it's a pretty valuable program.
I did the program. Um, and it was my first year on the board or second year. Really good. I highly recommend it. And then I sat on the panel one year too.
Oh, that's great. Yeah. And, um, yeah, I did it as well. And one of the things I liked about it is I did meet a cohort of people and I still run into some of those that are in nonprofit or business or others. Let's see, I had two CSBA committee meetings, bylaws and finance. We're getting ready for our board meeting next, or in a couple of weeks. And then, um, let's see, Dr. Baker and I were over at the San Mateo Foster City, who's thinking about doing, well, they are gonna be doing workforce housing. They're just doing a lot of research, talking to all sorts of people. They also were talking to people out of Santa Cruz that I think are also working on it. But they had a couple of us from San Mateo County come in and speak to them. And then finally I was at a CSBA lunch with Senator, California Senator Cortezi, and this was through the CSBA delegates. And, uh, he's actually great. I don't know how much you know about him, but he was a school board member. And so he actually knows about schools and his wife is still a school board member. So he's all about education and he sits on a number of the committees that have to do with education. So, um, I think he, he's a great person for you all, just to get to know if there's things that we have that come up in the future. And then of course, um, our Pacer with CSBA can always help make that introduction if you want.
Big shoes to fill when you leave. Yeah, you do a lot. So, uh, um, I, I visited two schools. I visited MIT, um, not with Alisa, so at a, at a different time. Uh, and, uh, it was an interest, it was, it was a fun morning. Um, you know, when I was reading our first, uh, um, discussion of the school sponsored trip's board policy, I remembered that at Hoover, they were, um, MIT, they were sixth grade, I think, was getting ready to go to the exploratorium and you could just see the excitement and engagement and how, you know, the kids were really looking forward to that field trip. It's so important to be able to get them off campus. It's so important to be able to get them off campus and, and give them those opportunities to be able to get around. You know, the passing period was, was really calm. It was, Bee spent a lot of time with me walking around through the classrooms. Really thankful that she's there, the work that she's doing. I think I can really see, see some of the differences that she's making. I think it's going to pay dividends over the next, next several years. I'm just really being, like, visiting there really reinforced for me the importance of just continuing to focus resources and programs and support systems that empower the students, the educators, the whole MIT community. So it was, it was a great visit. I appreciated it. I did want to mention too, that their community center, I think it's through their, their family center, that they're doing a food drive with a goal to feed 120 of their families. It ends on the 22nd. I know a bunch of our community schools are doing these kind of drives too. Yeah. So if, if anyone hears about any of them, like spread the word, sponsor it, things like that, their, their, their food drive, I think they're trying to collect it for Friday. Talked to Jorge about that. Yeah, I think we had talked about it, maybe trying to get that together. And I know that a bunch of the community schools do those kind of things. It's not only food drive, but it's also the gift drives. Yeah, yeah, things like that. And then, yeah, we were at Hoover this morning. We did talk about some of the learning center with some of the learning center teachers and some of the stuff there. We, you know, Lupe spent a good half hour just talking with us. And we got to hear really about how important the additional supports that you know, not just the district, but all the funding is able to be, be able to provide there, just how important her MTSS TOSA is, the coaches that are there. You know, the mental health counselors. So that was, that was really good to hear that kind of feedback and the real difference that, you know, the, the additional, you know, these additional roles are filling at the school sites. And then we walked through several, several classrooms. It was neat to see a bunch of engagement in there. You know, the pods of three together, working and collaborating on it. And repeatedly in multiple classrooms, that sort of like engagement and sort of the talking and like, not the old like sit quietly facing the front. So it was just, it was nice to see some of that working in many of the classrooms. Yeah.
So I attended the Wellness Committee meeting a while back, and I believe I sent slides to everybody.
Yeah.
Slide deck. Okay. And then Cecilia also celebrated her birthday with the Budget Renewal Committee. Unfortunately, we didn't know it was your birthday until I got home. So, and that's all I have.
Actually, can I, I'm sorry, can I just add? So from the, the visits, one thing I did is I made sure I went into the cafeterias at all four schools. And I did just want to comment how awesome the whole design looked and many more fresh fruits and vegetables. And, you know, talking to the staff, they seemed pretty happy. They had some ideas. And I said, you know, I know that Richie wants to hear about those. We're still in a startup mode with the self op, but it seemed to be going really well. So I hope we're hearing that from students and parents. And they're doing a lot more of the scratch cooking and all of that. So that looked really good. The other thing I wanted to say is the illustrious, illustrious, I can't, illustrative math, we got to come up with an easier word to say. I, I did see that in play in a lot of classrooms, and it was really great just to see the manipulatives in action. And the kids were just loving it. So anyway, just wanted to say that.
Everything's been covered. It was great. End of the last meeting that we have with the Budget Committee. So we did. I think it went well. It went really well. We'll be reporting on that at our next meeting, December 11th.
Correspondence, I received some emails and phone calls about the lighting item that we had and workforce housing. Think I had anything else.
I'd also reached out to our charter schools just to ask about their facilities needs, because that sometimes gets overlooked. And Kip got back to me with a stack rank kind of prioritized list of requested infrastructure improvements. And I sent that over to Dr. Baker for review. Also, per our last board meeting, was prompted by Dr. Baker to reach out to the county to begin a discussion about understanding what would need to be true in order for district unification to happen. We're still working on scheduling that first meeting, but that should happen in the next few weeks, fingers crossed, provided I actually respond to Evelyn's pings when she pings me. I also got email from an MIT student that, who is interested in writing up some of the school's history and managed, because Liz Wolfe is awesome, to route to Daryl Blackmore, who had a great deal of history to relate.
Um, let's see, other business suggested items for the future?
I won't be on the board, but I was thinking when we read the preschool this time, I don't think we've had a preschool report in quite a while. So I think that would be great for the whole board to really hear about. And maybe I'll dial in and listen, because I am kind of curious how things are going over there.
At RCTA, one of their preschool teachers is like, folks, just forget about us.
You know what? For a while, Edna was very good at coming here kind of regularly. Yeah, she's been quite busy. But you know what? I have gone out there and done tours in the past, and it's also very good to do that. So I'm sure she'd be happy to. But you're right. They, they want to see us out there. Yeah.
Okay. No changes to the meeting calendar. Brings us to nine seventeen. If we have a motion to adjourn?
Move, we adjourn. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye, go to bed.
Have a great Thanksgiving week, everybody too. See you back in December.